Mayor Querum.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Mabry.
Here.
Commissioner Fabia.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Please stand at your place and place the...
...to comply of the United States American and to the Republic with all its stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地一尊，
Before we get started, I'd like to introduce our city manager, Rachel Skadix. This is her first day on the job and comes with a meeting. Rachel came to us as a management analyst from Schaumburg in Illinois where she managed substantial capital and general budgets. She developed utility policies, worked on economic development initiatives, and worked with multiple collective bargaining units. She is a graduate of Wal- or she's from Walnut, a graduate of Earl Valley High School. And she has her master's degree from Northern Illinois University in Public Administration with an emphasis on local government. And I'm very, very pleased to have you here. I've been acting city manager for the last several months. I'm ready to relinquish that title and looking forward to a very long and successful career as our city manager.
Thank you.
Hello. And with that, we'll go to any public comments. No public comment, we'll go to Commissioner Newman for the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on October 9th as they be approved as written.
Second.
Motion's in second, any corrections? Paul Rowe.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querum.
Aye. Now we'll go to invoices, we'll start with Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have the bills for Public Affairs and Department of Accounts and Finances. In the Planning Department, $7,040.50. Administration is $8,378.44. Self-insurance, $54,068.69. Economic Development, $62,500. Tourism, $1,300. Property Department, $3,737.60. Community Development, $1,961.45. For a grand total for Public Affairs and Department of Accounts and Finances of $138,986.68. Let me try it again. Mayor, I have reviewed the bills, find them to be true and accurate, and move that they be paid.
I will second.
Motion's in second, any corrections or comments? Paul Rowe.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querum.
Aye.
And now we'll go to Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening I have the bills and payroll for Department of Streets and Public Approvements as follows. In the Street Department, a total of $34,681.70. In Motor Fuel Tax Department, $1,250. In Waste Water Collection, $14,813.56. In Waste Water Treatment, $2,548.63. In the Cemetery Department, $6,910.65. Average expenditures of $10,892.63. For grand total of $71,097.17. Mayor Querum, I have examined the bills and payroll, find them to be true and correct, and request payment be made.
Second. Motion's in second, any comments or corrections? Paul Rowe.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querum.
Aye.
And now we'll go to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the bills for Public Health, Safety, and Civil Defense. For the Police Department, I have $70,740.86. Fire and Ambulance Department, I have $45,927.44. For a total of $116,668.30. I have reviewed these bills and I believe them to be true and accurate, and I move they be paid.
Second. Motion's in second, any corrections or comments? Paul Rowe.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querum.
Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. Tonight I have the bills and payroll for Department of Public Property Utilities. The electric bills were $1,000. Electric generation of $76,532.14. Electric distribution of $73,148.42. Electric administration of $13,176.33. Water people of $29,995.71. Water distribution of $7,756.12. Water administration of $290,278.74. For a grand total of $491,887.46. You have a duty to these bills, believe them to be true and correct, and move that they be paid.
I'll second that.
Motion's in second, any comments or corrections? Paul Rowe.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querum.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. And now we'll go to regular business, we'll start with Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. Tonight we have the first reading of ordinance 0-15-11-02-30. Said ordinance authorizing the purchase of used equipment. And this is the used equipment providing for the electric generation from Wheeler World. I move that we pass this to the second reading.
I'll second that.
Motion's in second, any comments? This does not exceed $210,000. Anything else? Okay, Paul Rowe.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querum.
Aye.
I also have the bids for the water chemicals. The hydrofluoric acid is awarded to Viking Chemical for 34 cents a pound. The hydrated lime from Brent Tag itself at $163 a ton plus 33.75 per freight. Carbon dioxide, A-plus distributing of 59.5 cents a pound. In item number four, we do have a correction. The low bid is Bravo Chemical at 69 cents and not TBS at 84 cents. Liquid calcium hydroxide is in the Brent Tag South at 5.76 cents per pound. Plus regular books for freight. I move that we award these bids to the following those vendors.
I'll second that.
Motion's in second, any comments? Paul Rowe.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querum.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Warren. I'll go to Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening we have Resolution R 510180. Basically, this is the resolution through the State of Illinois allowing a developer out on West Prue Street to put an entrance into his commercial project he is building. So, we are not incurring any costs in doing this. We are just agreeing as a city that we approve the entrance for the development out there on West Prue Street. And the state just wants to make sure that we approve it and write it. So that's, again, we're not incurring any costs. So, I make a recommendation that we approve this resolution.
Second. Motion's in second, any comments? This is, has to do with the cream of the garden, correct? Go ahead, Paul Rowe.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman. Mayor Querum.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Mabry. And we'll go to Commissioner Fabia.
I have the first reading for ordinance 0-15-11-01-50. It is ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property. It is the 1993 Chevy Suburban Silverado, which is no longer necessary or useful to or for the best interest of the City of Princeton. 1993 Chevy Silverado reference above shall be sold by sealed bid to the highest bidder with said bids to be submitted at the time and place designated by the city. I would like to make motion that we bring this to a vote.
I think you should go to a second reading, Laura. And I'll...
Oh, and go to a second reading.
I will approve that. I'll second it.
Motion's in second, any comments? Paul Rowe.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querum.
Aye.
Okay. Next, I have the Fire Department invitation to bid on the ambulance. This was the grant that was awarded for $170,000. The Fire Department, City of Princeton, is accepting proposals for the purchase of one 2016 Type 1 ambulance. Specifications cover an ambulance built for a four-wheel drive pickup truck style chassis. By definition, S F four by the General Services Administration specification, KKK-A-1A22-F, Type 1 ambulance. Bids must be enclosed in a three-ring binder marked 2016 Ambulance Bid Package. Copies of the specifications are available at the Office of City Clerk and Princeton Fire Department, 2 South Main Street, Princeton, Illinois, 61356. Ambulance may be bid with and with trade-in. Trade-in ambulance may be viewed at Princeton Fire Department, 2 South Main Street, Princeton, Illinois, 61356. The Princeton Fire Department, City of Princeton, reserves the right to reject any and all bids and accept a proposal which, in its opinion, is most advantageous from the standpoint of design, maintenance, service, feature, and cost. Bids will be accepted in the Office of City Clerk until Thursday, November 12th, at 1:30 P.M. Bids will be open on Thursday, November 12th, 2 P.M. at City Hall. Council Chambers, 2 South Main Street, Princeton, Illinois, 61356.
Thank you, Commissioner Fabia. I would like a motion on the reappointments to Princeton Public Library Board. Three individuals, all are three-year terms, they will all expire on June 30th, 2018. The individuals are Paul Ernst, Carolyn Schaper, and Roger Gustafson. These are the appointments.
Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint these three individuals for an additional three years.
I would...
Motion's in second, any comments? Paul Rowe.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querum.
Aye.
Now, I got a, we'll go over a... We're doing some major sewer work, rolling sewer work on South Church Street and out in Bailey subdivision. When these jobs, it was primarily a sewer project, and how we had to put the streets back together. When this project was first bid, it was not, what we're doing now was not part of the bid process. And we're getting the roads ready for the winter so we can come back in and actually build a new road on South Church and pave the road in Bailey. Again, these items were not budgeted, so it's put us in a bind as far as where we're going to come up with the money to pay for this. The two projects together is about $65,000. Then to add to that, we have been doing some work up at the North End. This is on North Pleasant Street off of Clark. There's a sanitary sewer that runs through the alley up there, and there was a sewer collapse. And we went up there and started repairing. And once we got in it, we found that there was even a further collapse further down the line. So, they're going to have to dig up maybe 50 feet or more to replace the collapsed sewer. That is the projected cost of $10,000, and that needs to be done now as well. So, we've got about $75,500 in expenses that have, that actually are already doing the work on South Church Street. These have to be paid for, so we're in a bind trying to come up with this money. So, I'm going to propose the following, and that's how to pay for this. And Pete and I have been working on this for the last week and a half or so, and this is what we came up with. First of all, we had, we were contacted by the state, and we were told that we had about $10,000 sitting in our mortar fuel tax fund that didn't belong there. We got in there somehow, didn't belong there. So, we're transferring that $10,000 from our mortar fuel tax to our general fund. So, we're going to use that $10,000 for this project. I'm also suggesting that we cancel this year's city Christmas party. That's a $6,000 expense. We could better get that on these projects. We also are going to discontinue the prescription plan for our retirees over 65. There are very, very good affordable plans out there for prescription plans. This will generate savings of $36,000 to the city. We're going to, suggesting that we defer some planning, development, equipment, and software. That totals about $18,000. And also defer Planning Department Engineering, which is another $3,000. That leaves us about $2,500 short of our goal. Where we're going to go for that, I don't know if you remember, we had a, you know, we put a cannibal system in out the wastewater plant several years ago, it never worked. So, we hired an attorney, we went after the manufacturer and the contractor who put that equipment in. And we reached a settlement with the company, and we netted an $800,000 settlement. That's sitting in the bank right now. So, the thought is, is to borrow that, when that's $2,476.50, is to borrow that money from that wastewater account. That will get us to the $75,500 margin that we need to be in. Wastewater Department will pay that money back to that wastewater account in the next year to that capital budget. So, that's the expense, and that's the revenue sources that we can pull from to take care of these issues that we can be taking care of. And I would order it up to council for discussion.
Okay. I agree with everything. I do not agree with canceling the Christmas party. $6,000, we can go to 3,000 on what we borrow, or 8,000, excuse me, on what we borrow. The employees deserve Christmas party. They work hard all year for us, they keep the city running. It's not their fault we felt short on the balance, and I believe we should keep the Christmas party.
I don't disagree with what you said. This is a, first of all, we want to borrow as little from that wastewater account as we can, because wastewater does have to pay it back. And we need that $800,000, because we have to put in another, I don't know if I refer to it as a cannibal system, I guess you could.
Treatment system.
Treatment system. We have to put another one in, we have to have that money to use it. So, the least amount of money that we can borrow from that account, actually, earlier today, I think we were sitting at borrowing, how much, 13?
About, yeah, about 13,000.
About $13,000. And we came up with these Planning Department Equipment Software and Engineering to come up with the, you know, to get us to where we don't have to borrow $2,500 from that account. Again, the least amount that we can borrow from that, the best, again, it has to be paid back by wastewater and next year's capital budget in April. So, I don't disagree with what Commissioner Fabia's saying, but I just think that we need to be drastically responsible at this point so we can get these, get these projects taken care of.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a couple of quick comments. With sanitary sewer in account, our agents is all over Midwest, so it's not anything against reflection poorly against Princeton by itself, but sanitary sewer is anywhere from, say, eight feet deep to, say, 13 feet deep, depending on what part of town you're in. And we're going to have more and more cases of what happened on North Pleasant where we start out with a small failure and start digging into it and finding out we've got more and more footage to replace. And of course, we contract that all out, and I understand why, because it can be pretty dangerous being down 12 feet in the ground with a sewer system replacement. So, I think we're going to have more instances, unfortunately, where we're going to have to go in and make repairs that are going to be costly, because we start out with maybe 20 feet of sewer work, and then all of a sudden realize you've got to go in and do another 50 or 80 feet. So, I have no problem with your numbers, which you put together. I think that, I just want to forewarn you that it could very well happen again where all of a sudden we're going to be having to dip into it, borrow, you know, 15, 20 grand to repair a sanitary sewer project that just comes up all of a sudden, and they just do that. They fail, and all of a sudden we camera, we find out that we have a problem. So, I think you're, we're trying to put together your numbers, and I have no problem that you got there.
But it's a good plan. You all can blame me for the Christmas party. I'm the one that pointed in that direction. I don't think it needs to be canceled. There's also a line item in the community development for $12,000 for advertising expense. Is that part of these numbers, do you know?
It's not.
It's not? So, what are we advertising to community development, $12,000?
I do have to check into that. I don't know. It was somehow tagged with tourism somehow. I don't know.
We need to check into that, because that's another, could use at least $6,000 of that, I would guess. And the Christmas party would be on, but $6,000 for the Christmas party is rather high, I think. If we could even trim that back and make it happen, then I might be all for that.
Yeah. And the $6,000 for the Christmas party, that does not include the service awards that we give out at the end of the year, and also does not include the Christmas gift cards that we give to city employees. Those remain. This is just the Christmas party itself, which I think is, from what I understand, and I've been to all of them since I've been on the council, and I think it's mostly attended by retirees. There's quite a few retirees.
There are a lot of retirees. There's also a lot of people who do board work committees, volunteer committees, that get recognized at that time of year also. So, it's a family affair of many organizations around the city.
As far as the justice, we look at the advertising, to see what we're advertising, and if we can trim that and still keep intact, the Christmas party ended maybe a reduced rate.
All right. Well, we'll look into that, if we need to look into that, if we can, tomorrow, so we can get this thing, get this thing going so we're solid on how we're paying for these projects.
I have to make a motion that we utilize the financial resources you've outlined to cover this unfunded projects, these unfunded projects that you talked about. I make that motion.
Can I speak with the boardman? Frank, can you speak with the boardman? No, I wouldn't pick so P. It's a matter of just shifting money from one place to another. I don't think we need to redo the budget to accomplish this.
So, there's just a consensus to, we'll check out the community development.
We're concerned.
If that hasn't worked, then use the old stuff. Why?
We'll look at it, let's see if we can do it tomorrow so we can get this thing set. And I appreciate that Pete did a lot of work on this, put this stuff together, finding this money, so I appreciate the work that he's done, as much as we can handle it so. Any old business? Any new business?
Yes, I have one item here. It was brought to my attention regarding your Facebook post on the news Tribune building. My biggest concern was, at the end, you state we will be addressing this proposal at an upcoming council meeting. Monday's meeting is probably too soon. We can talk about this on social media, but we can't discuss it here. I don't understand.
You can certainly bring it up. I just, that was my, that was my opinion. But, you know, I was waiting for, you know, we're having to have an ordinance on that abroad, but if you want to discuss it, we can certainly discuss it. There's nothing so hidden there.
Okay. Let's start with volunteers. We're looking, you can look at, to volunteers to deconstruct the building. Have you asked our insurance company? If we can do that.
We aren't that far yet. We haven't even purchased the building. We will get to that point, but, you know, these volunteers could include construction companies that want to give back to the company, to the community, and wants to take the lumber and so on out of that building. I mean, there's a lot of different avenues. I can ensure even that we would never put anybody in harm's way without making sure that there is, there's full insurance on any volunteers doing that work.
Well, I think the insurance would also have to look into the reuse or repurpose of material. I know a lot of insurance companies will not allow that. Okay. The deconstruction is minimal. Do we know how it's attached to the common wall?
We don't.
No, we really don't know. The building was built approximately 40 years ago, and the building we're talking about is the old news Tribune building at the corner of Main and Prairie Street. It's a frame structure, a bi-level building that I would say it's about 35 feet long, so there is an attachment to the building to the south. Now, I understand that the mayor has talked to the building owner to the south to discuss it with him, and I'll let the mayor assess that.
Yeah, the building owner is, he's totally on board with it. He thinks it's great. You know, as far as bringing that building down and making, he initially wanted, thought maybe it could be made into a parking, parking lot, parking space. But, you know, we had discussions about that, and I think the thought is, is that that's a very tight intersection, it's the busiest intersection in Princeton. You know, pulling in to park is one thing, but backing out on the Prue Street would be a very unsafe situation. So, when that was discussed, he thought, you know, making that, bringing that building down and making that a green space would be, it was a, you know, it's a very worthwhile, worthwhile project. His only concern was the side of this building, because obviously he can't tell us what is going, what that side of the building is going to look at, you know, when that building comes down. It's got stuck a lot. So, obviously, that side of that building is going to have to be, have some repair work done to it, which would not be at his expense. That would be something that we would tackle, but I think that would be a minimal expense as far as what we want to do up there at that, at that intersection.
I think we need to be very, very cautious about the common walls. We got burned not too many years ago downtown with a park adjacent to the Echol Clothing Building where we wound up paying, if I can remember, it's 17, well, in excess of $20,000 to fix that wall.
Which is 35.
35,000. So, it can add up very, very quickly. So, if we decide the council to proceed with this, we need to do our due diligence and find out what's illegal, ramifications are of the common wall. Who's responsible for what?
Absolutely. Thankfully, that building only goes up to a half, no, maybe a little bit, one halfway up the side of that building. So, which is a big, which is a huge plus as well.
Being 40 years old, Commissioner Mabry, do you know if there's been asbestos abatement done with that?
I am not aware of that. It has carpeting in the, on both levels, and carpeting was just recently replaced. Not that that matters, but they did take and replace all the carpeting in the past two years.
Do we know what's below the carpet?
It's concrete on the, on the main level, and then on the second level, since the bi-level is just, it's just plywood. And we do the news Tribune, my role in this is, I am, as a realtor, I'm not getting compensated that News Tribune is kind enough to consider building this to the city. And I'm obviously very excited about this, so the idea that we'll be able to clean up a corner that could be made to be back into green space. So, I'm not being compensated whatsoever, and I would be glad to have any of you come down, look at the building. We do have a set of keys that News Tribune is providing for us to take a look at the building. So, if you ever want to come take a walk through up by the walkages building.
Yeah, which I suggested about over, maybe a week or so ago, that happened, but I don't think it occurred. I, you know, I, these comments are all very well-founded and well-taken, and, you know, obviously, we'd look into all these things before, even if it would be done up there. And I look at this as a project, what we're trying to do on Main Street, especially, you know, everything that's thrown on the North Main Street, like the seed that come down to South Main Street, I think this is just part of the process of rejuvenating our, our Main Street. And that is a step, I believe, in the right direction.
Considering we're losing property checks, will you be asking the other taxing bodies for their input?
No, I didn't. They're giving the property to us, to the city, and it'll be the city's property at that point. And the property, the real estate taxes to the city on a yearly basis for that property is like $580. And I think that might even be lower if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if there's, you know, the property tax bill up there, but I think it's like $580. So it's not... It's not a huge substantial loss to the city, but it would be our property.
It's not a huge loss to the city, but the other taxing bodies are barely keeping their heads above water, and it would be a significant loss for them.
Well, the long term, what I'm looking at is long term, and again, rejuvenating our South Main Street and bringing, obviously, more retail shoppers to Princeton. Our retail sales tax is our number-one revenue source. We want to see that increase, so we can funnel more money to our street departments, so we can start taking care of our streets. You know, bringing the period lights, for instance, that are at the north end of Main Street, bringing them down to the south end, reintroducing trees on the south end, doing little things like this project, possibly with the news Tribune building, will bring more people into town and give more people the gist to, you know, entrepreneurs, open up a shop, a specialty shop, which will, you know, obviously, increase our sales stature. So I'm looking out for city Princeton and bringing our Main Street back to the way, you know, it was 30 years ago or so. I think we can do it, but that's my long-range goal on this.
And all my questions will be answered, correct, before we bring the council to vote?
Yeah, I mean, the questions that you raise, issues that you raise are, you know, they're issues that have to be addressed. I mean, they're... It's just all part of the... All part of the process of doing this. We're not... We wouldn't take possession of the building and just send some people up there to start tearing it down. You know, we're going to make sure that our eyes are dotted, our keys are crossed, and make sure that everything is legal and proper, and everybody is covered, and, you know...
Well, I want to know final expense, too, also.
Yeah, final expense, again, I don't anticipate the final expense. Yeah, I think the biggest expense is if we bring that building down, because we're repairing the side of the building that's there now, so it blends in. It's a stucco, and, you know, we want to put a layer, you know, a stucco back up, and...
The biggest expense, if we get stuck tearing it down, that's going to be your biggest expense. You're looking at probably easily 20 grand to tear it down, dispose of that building.
Well, that's why we want to take a look at possibly volunteers. You know, if there's a... I don't know, probably a litany of different ways that we can look at this, who can tear that down without the city incurring the expense, because there's a lot of reusable materials in that building, and lumber and so on, that contractors, somebody, or schools might want.
You may very well be right, but the bottom line is we have to be prepared. If we do accept this, that we may end up incurring all those costs, because there are no volunteers. I'm very skeptical of someone giving somebody to the city. We have a couple of whiles up in the city right now that someone is, you know, giving to the city, and it's cost us a lot of money over the years. It'll be... My opinion, if they want to give away something, have them tear the building down and give us a lot.
Well, I don't think that will happen, but again, we'll... We will make sure that, as we take these steps, to ensure that we can bring in volunteers to tear the building down, if that's how we want to go, which I think is the way you want it built. And, you know, again, we'll make sure that everything is lined up, you know, before we vote on this. And we will vote on it.
I'd like to just follow up with just a few things. I, you know, we wear a lot of different... We wear different hats as commissioners, and we bring those hats to the table, and I appreciate Laura's concern over those items. As a realtor, and, you know, we as real estate brokers in Princeton, we're always looking at ways to promote the community and make sure our downtown looks vibrant and alive. And to be able to take a corner that's kind of a tough-looking building, it's got that mansard roof, and it's blue, and it kind of jumps out at you, and when the state of Illinois widened Prairie Street going to the east, they chopped away at that corner. If you were to walk that actual intersection there and try to maneuver that with somebody in a wheelchair, I don't... The state would never allow us to do that as far as individuals, but they really took a lot of that corner away. To be able to go back to green space and just keep it real simple with some grass and a couple of trees, I think would be a tremendous thing for that corner. So I see it from a real estate broker's perspective that it's a way to enhance that corner and unify the community at a very limited cost. So it's a long-term project. I know tonight we're wrestling over dollars to go towards some sewer repairs as well as road repairs, so I understand that there are times that we're looking at the short term, and there's other times we're looking more at the long term. I just hope that the council will be open-minded, and again, I would encourage you, if you want to take a look at that building, any of you commissioners, I don't think any of you have that chance to look inside, but I'd love to take you down there and walk it through. We can measure it and think about that wall, and we can pull back the carpet and just do a little due diligence. Although we're not professional inspectors, but we certainly can go take a look at that building and then come up with your conclusion.
How long has that building been on the market?
It's been on the market for about two years. They... The news Tribune related it to a handicap accessible building as well as the United Way, so that's one of the challenges, is to buy a level building, you come in and you immediately go up six steps or you go down six steps, and so it's not handicap accessible, and it'd be very difficult to make handicap accessible.
I just wonder if, for some reason, that building remains... It's become ice, or probably isn't marketable. What could possibly go in there? I mean, maybe we have somewhat of an obligation to take a serious look at taking control of that corner.
One thing I would say, the... There's a surplus of office retail space on both north and south Main, and eliminating one office space would enhance the opportunity for the other landlords to be able to lease their buildings to. That's a ripening effect. We've got people at the north end that have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in renovating their buildings, and I know that there's two buildings that are on the northeast side that are completely renovated now, but they're sitting empty, ready to be leased out. So even with renovations, we still have challenges of filling those spaces. And again, I just think it's a long-term project. I think that a real estate broker and community would play a prudent investment for the city to make. And I know the donation, just like, you know, the trolley was donated to us, but we gave that some thought, because we had to invest money in that. And I think the trolley is going to be a great investment. I really think that's a neat marketing tool, but that did cost us money, even though it's free. I mean, we spent some dollars to get that up and running.
I would say to see us look back, if we turn this opportunity down, look back three or four years from now and see that building still sitting there, that would be troublesome to me.
Does that have a... That lower level has a basement level?
Yeah, the lower... That building sits about four feet below grade, so when you step down to what we call the lower level, you're about four feet down.
So that basically has to be torn out of there.
Well, it's not a true basement. You're down four feet, so you'd have to be torn out, though, correct? I would say... I'd have to ask somebody in the tree business to make sure four feet of fill would be enough for landscape, for at least for grass to grow.
And at worst, you've got a bunch of holes in the floor.
I would think that would be a prudent tend-to-do for drainage.
And Commissioner Newman's comment about the building, three or four years down, the real... We do have other alternatives to have, is if that does fall under district repair, we can order a Jamal Shure consent order for it, and don't have to take it down. So one way or another, it's going to come back to us, and we'll do whatever with it.
Well, and Commissioner Mavory brought up my Facebook page, and I'm playing, did that, because I put this stuff on my Facebook page and bring it out as an idea. This is something that I'd like to look at, Commissioner Mavory. So I throw these ideas out there, because I want to see what the feedback is from those that are reading the page. And there's a lot of support for this. There wasn't any negative comments whatsoever made on doing this. Concerns, yes. Some of the concerns was, you know, maybe the parking lot instead. I think that was one concern, but by and large, 99% was positive. So there's, you know, there's support for this. Everybody talks about it, I think it's a great idea, so.
There's going to be support as long as it doesn't cost us anything. But then if it costs us something, any of your support's going to go by the list. It's really hard for me to get my hands around this, that we're going to possibly spend a lot of money for this, when Mr. Mavory comments all the time that our streets and infrastructure is all falling apart. And here, we're going to spend more for something we really don't need.
Well, my whole is that we're not going to spend a lot of money on it. And again, the long range that I'm looking at is the rejuvenation of our Main Street and the increase of retail sales tax coming into the city and our general fund and getting it to our street department, so we have the money to take care of our streets. That's the... That's what funds our street department, is our sales tax revenue primarily. So the more that we can rejuvenate Main Street, get business to open, get people to shop in Princeton, you know, the better our bottom lines in the long run, and again, that benefits our streets. And that's... You're right. I mean, our streets are... Our streets are in dire condition. They need the attention, and this is a way of... A small way, a small piece of getting us to that end goal.
I'd like to... Again, thanks to the fellow commissioners for their comments, and I would encourage you to come take a look at the building, and you're not going to make the total decision in that visit, I would encourage you to come look at the building. And again, it's a long-term assessment.
It's been a good discussion. Any further comments? Okay, well, we'll... Any public comments? Just need your name, and you might have to flip that thing on.
Yes, that's your job. You have to learn how to do that. Hi, I'm Geraldine Woodley, and I just had a quick question. Are we still going to have yardways pick up in this month?
Yeah, I think it goes to the 30th, and is it... Do we know when this thing's right now, from this... Is it this Wednesday?
It's still the first and third, as we supposed to...
I've heard two different first and third. I've heard every other. First and third.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? You understand a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adjourn to executive session under State Statute 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C11 to discuss pending litigation, and reconvene for our next regular meeting on Monday, November 16th, at 7:00 p.m. in City Hall.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Hold on.
Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Mavory, Commissioner Fabia, Commissioner Newman, Mayor Querem.